Good evening, everyone. Sorry for the delay. May we all rise, please?
Let the religions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on religion under God, in indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I also wanted to start real quickly. Wish all mothers here and at home an early happy Mother's Day. Thank you for all that you do. And also to acknowledge Teacher Appreciation Week and thank all of our staff for all of their work, their dedication, and all the care that they show our children and our families every single day. And starting off this evening, we are having our annual public hearing on the proposed 2526 school budget.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to go over the state sheet, sorry, the budget hearing for 2526. So Proposition 1 on the ballot is going to be the budget. The top half of this spreadsheet is your is the expense portion of the budget. So on the appropriation side of the budget, that's the expenses. We're going to see a budget change of 1.95%. That's budget to budget. On the estimated revenue, we are looking at first number of lines brings us to a under the non-property tax revenue, we see a little bit of a deduction, negative $196,000. So that increases our property tax just a little. So that brings us to a property tax increase, which is 11, of 2.36. And normally, when we see something like this, it's usually flipped around. But because of a few deductions in our state aid, we have a decrease in our transportation aid, we have a decrease in our OSIS expense aid, which affects our property tax. So we have to show our budget also as a three-part budget component summary. So it's broken up into the administrative budget. We're looking at a 10.02% of the budget being on the administrative side. And that are expenses with regard to board of education, administration, our financial auditing, ABL insurance, personnel, registrar, records management, the supervision. That includes the principal's office. The second item is going to be considered our program budget. That's our instructional codes. So that makes up, that makes up a 78.33% of the budget. And finally, we have our capital budget. That is our operations, our maintenance, the repair of facilities, cost of construction, etc. And that makes up 11.66% of the budget. So we have a second proposition on ballot. So that's Proposition 2. It is a withdrawal from our capital reserve of $7.3 million. It's for two separate projects. One is the high school, middle school, all purpose cafeteria renovation. And the second is the high school library research center renovation. Now, with all capital reserve withdrawals, these are accounts, savings accounts that we already have. So we are asking the public whether we could withdraw from those accounts. And as such, we need a separate proposition. You'll see our capital balance as of 6:3024 was $10.7 million. This has no impact on taxes. And finally, when is the budget code? Budget code is always going to be a third Tuesday in the month of May. It's, we have that three locations. That's Bayville, Bayville Intermediate School, and the Florida Primary. And finally, the Rockville Reform Church between the hours of 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And that's the hearing.
Thank you, Karen. Do we have any public comment? No public comment on that? We're going to move on now to another public hearing on the Code of Conduct. Marvel, would you like to do a little intro on that?
Yes. So we started work on the Code of Conduct probably 18 months ago, maybe even two years ago, exploring different parts of the Code of Conduct that needed to be updated and quite literally brought into this century. The official Code of Conduct work started this September. It included all of our administrators' meetings several times, always with legal presence. And then the process by which we were supposed to get the Code of Conduct to the public has been followed. The Coordinated Parent Councils were all given the opportunity to view the Code of Conduct, and all have responded in writing that they had no feedback. And I believe Ken Packard met with the collective bargaining units, and whatever feedback was given was legal in nature or corrected by legal and viewed by legal, and this is the final verdict. The Code of Conduct will be instituted for the next school year and has some changes to our dress code and our student behavior. And what was the other top one? I'm drawing a blank. Dress code is really the big one. Yeah. Dress code. So once it is approved, we would, I'm sure, give information, maybe in a quick presentation to the public.
Any questions from the board on this?
No, I've had a question just in terms of how well, if there are actual, which I'm assuming there are substantive, some substantive changes. How will we alert, you know, students, parents, teachers, you know, the people who are down by this? How will we, we keep up with that?
And I'm going to look right at Mr. Sostero right now, because what we do, thank you, is whether all of our principals have, and they call it different terms, I'm going to use Mr. Sostero since he's here, town hall meetings. So a great way that we work with our students here is we work with them in assemblies. In the upper grades, meaning 6th through 12th, they meet by grade level. So Mr. DiClemente and his administrative staff will meet in the auditorium. They'll go over some of the new additions and upgrades. As superintendent of schools, I did personally meet with our middle school students and high school students just to gain some feedback from them. And when I reviewed dress code, the additions to really cadence, the students, which I wasn't surprised because we have wonderful students, agreed with all of the upgrades. And I think, you know, I always really listen to our students as far as, and then I give that information back to our school leaders. They just like things explained to them. And that is what we're going to do. You know, obviously, this will be on our website, will be explained to us to our parents. But it's really important that our students themselves are the ones that embrace some of these new additions. There are really not many changes. And what I express to the students always when I meet with them is our number one priority at the Locust Valley School District is more than their safety. Everything that we do revolves around their safety and welfare. And that's why we look at different regulations or upgrades and rules, because as adults, we're here to protect them first. And they all understand that. So that's how I always set the stage of the conversations, and then we discuss that early. And both groups of students were completely on board and felt that the changes that the Code of Conduct made made sense for them.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Do we have any public comment? No? Okay, thank you. We're going to move on now to reports to the board. We'll begin with the student report. Jason?
Regarding the work of education, unfortunately, CNN is unable to make it here tonight due to an athletic event. But we both hope to have us here tonight. As the school year begins to come to a close, many successful events have been happening at Locust Valley. The arts programs are thriving with the high school chorus, orchestra, and band having their spring concert on April 30th in the auditorium. Congratulations to these groups on their excellent performances. Last night, the middle school also had their spring concert, doing a wonderful job on all their songs. The art shows featuring work from both the middle school and the high school students was also featured last night on May 6th. Their artwork was displayed beautifully throughout the halls, highlighting what they have worked on this past year. Also, the Locust Valley Central School District's final goodnight was an exchange success on May 1st, inviting all to celebrate the end of the year in the cafeteria. This provided families with the opportunity to showcase unique aspects of their culture and further learn about the new parent square platform. Additionally, congratulations to the students honored at a top 15 ceremony. These students are celebrated for their academic achievements in high school and have the opportunity to thank the teachers who helped them in their success. Further, Locust Valley Class of 2.5 also celebrated their annual Up and Away Day, where students wore the college colors. These students gathered in the gymnasium to celebrate their academic journey together before graduation. Locust Valley Budget Edition of Sound Waves is also posted on the Bishop website. This will provide crucial information for the budget vote on Tuesday, May 20th, from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Thank you to the board for having us here tonight. We hope to maintain this success as a square yes.
Thank you. We'll keep going, and we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'd like to first start recognizing Mrs. Womby Bennett, the dedicated leader of our teachers' union and a proud graduate of the Locust Valley School District. Her commitment to educators is evident in her recent election to represent the New York State Teachers' Federation at the Long Island Federation of Labor. In addition, she serves as the Long Island President Council Local Representative for the Long Island Teachers' Nephilim Fund. This week is Teachers' Appreciation Week. We want to express our deep gratitude for our exceptional staff. The unwavering dedication and compassionate approach to connecting with our students make a real difference. Thank you for uplifting, encouragement, inspiring our students to become the best selves. Your positive influence as role models is truly valued. We also want to give special recognition to Pam Monces, our outstanding sixth-grade teacher, for her nomination of New York State Teacher of the Year. Although she didn't advance, her gallant commitment to the students of the Locust Valley Central School District warrants our sincere appreciation. Thank you, Mr. Sostero, for recognizing her. If you want to say something, do you want to come up?
Thank you, thank you. So I'll give you a little backstory, something that's not on the script here. But I did type up quite a number of items to make sure I covered everything. So this all started like Superintendent Verna said, with, you know, me watching and observing and popping into Ann's classroom for the last now almost two years. And halfway through the year, about December, I called her in and I said, I might call you Aunt Anne. And she said, call you Aunt Anne. I called in and I said, Anne, I just wanted to talk to you for a minute. She said, all right. And I really called her. This was on the phone before, what's going on? And I think she was maybe a little nervous. I said, no, it's all good. I just wanted to, you know, talk to you and tell you that I'd like to, with your permission, nominate you as Teacher of the Year to New York State, to their program. nominate you as Teacher of the Year to New York State, to their program. It's something that has to be timely and submitted in an orderly fashion with various dates, and there are many steps that are included in this. And I just wanted to run by you, see if you're okay with this, because I think you're going to win. And when you do, it's going to require you to possibly go to Albany to speak in front of various crowds. And true to her nature, who she is, the first thing she said was, wait, so if I have to go and speak to Albany and maybe like on tour and be absent from the building, what's going to happen to my face? I said, I figured you'd say that. Besides the fact that she just was really honored, she said she was humbled. It certainly must run in the family because she has a sister that teaches out of Florida who was also nominated, and did she win during the year or was she nominated? She won Teacher of the Year. So it runs in the family, and I didn't know that beforehand. And I, she said, you know, let me just go home and think about it, talk to my husband. And I think she really decided to absorb the recognition because she's not certainly someone that's looking for that. And she was just, again, humbled and honored, and it was just really a nice conversation to have with her. So with that, I stand before you to speak about an educator who exemplifies excellence, dedication, and profound commitment to our students, Mrs. Anne Anne Moncies. For the past few years, I've had the distinct pleasure of working alongside Mrs. Moncies at the Locust Valley Middle School. In every aspect of her work, she demonstrates a strong sense of pride and unwavering professionalism. As a vital member of our sixth-grade team, Mrs. Moncies' commitment to her students, to their parents, and to her colleagues is nothing short of an outstanding, is nothing short of outstanding and truly inspirational. Mrs. Moncies possesses a rare combination of qualities that make her an exceptional teacher. Her care, compassion, positivity have allowed her to become an invaluable asset to our school community. Anne is so passionate and positive that just last year, she approached me with Mrs. Peterson with the idea of starting a civic-minded geography club, Paul to 59th Club. For those of you that might be around my age, this is an old title based on a song that kids in the state elementary school, "The Ringer's Holdin' Fifty States," I remember when I was in fourth grade. This club has taken off and recently hosted students from Fandwood Middle School, from Heathaw to Ellis and Jericho Middle School, who joined us for our second annual Fun Field Day that included station work, escape rooms, and our quote-unquote "eat the clock" activities that focus on national parks, state capitals, and regional facts. You did it right, Ms. R. It was a wonderful opportunity for our students to interact with middle schoolers from our area and collaborate on engaging U.S. geography tests. They really just had a ball. We got a lot of good feedback from both Jericho and their followers. An effective educator, as we know, must possess certain instincts, sound judgment, and wise decision-making. Mrs. Moncies is above all child-centered, and she possesses the ability to communicate effectively with students, parents, staff, and administration. Mrs. Moncies embodies all these qualities and more. I've personally observed her tireless efforts to improve student behavior and achievement, address parent dissent with empathy and understanding, and improve our instructional programs with insight and enthusiasm. She approaches every challenge with confidence and a solutions-oriented mindset. Over her 23-year tenure, her reputations for improvement have consistently heightened the prestige and integrity of our school community. Beyond the professional accomplishment, it is hands, dedication to students that truly sets her apart. She believes that learning should be engaging, relevant, and personalized. She designs innovative lessons that seamlessly integrate your world, problem-solving, encouraging students to apply their knowledge to authentic situations. Her classroom is, and many have described it, as a vibrant hub of inquiry and discovery. One prime example of her innovative approach is the implementation of flexible seating options by providing students with a variety of choices, including standing desks, stability walls, and comfort chairs. Walk into Anne's room any given day, and there's something new in there. And maybe, oh, I picked it up at Ikea, I'm so, I'm so, I'm, I, Andy, let me know what you need, we'll get it for you. You don't think we're in the southern environment. Anne caters to her diverse learning styles and fosters a sense of student ownership in their learning environment. This flexible approach not only enhances student engagement, but also promotes a sense of comfort and autonomy, creating an inclusive and supportive learning space. Mrs. Moncies cultivates a warm and respectful classroom community where every student feels valued and supported. She recognizes the importance of building strong relationships with her students and creates a safe and nurturing environment where they feel comfortable taking risks, making mistakes, and celebrating their success. Mrs. Moncies is a highly reflective and dedicated professional who continuously seeks opportunities to enhance her teaching practice. She actively participates in professional development, attends educational conferences, and routinely collaborates with her colleagues to share back best practices and refine her instructional strategy. Furthermore, Mrs. Moncies maintains open and consistent communication with parents, providing regular updates on student progress, and offering personalized suggestions to support their child's academic growth. Mrs. Moncies is a highly respected colleague and a valuable asset to the Locust Valley Middle School. She willingly shares her expertise with fellow educators, mentors, and teachers, and actively participates in school-wide initiatives to improve student learning. In fact, and on any given week or month when I talk to her, Mrs. Moncies will often comment that she hit the teaching lottery and she was given the opportunity to work at Locust Valley School District. I can say with certainty that we, hit the lottery, will be successfully recruited and hired her. Anne is at her core a passionate advocate for our students. She believes in the power of education to transform lives. She consistently strives to create equitable learning opportunities for all students and empowers them from lifelong learners. In short, Miss Anne Moncies embodies the qualities of an exceptional educator, her dedication, her innovative practices, and her unwavering commitment to creating a positive learning environment, make her an extraordinary teacher. She is more than deserving of New York State Teacher of the Year, in my opinion, you messed up. We are lucky to have her. She is our Teacher of the Year, and congratulations. Thank you so much for everything you do for our students and our community.
Bring the kids. Come on, we're going to make the picture. You guys ready for those smiles? She wants it first, too. So she's definitely ready. No, it was happening in the middle of the night, and she wanted to show it right now. So we hid it so the two thirty didn't see it. So you just have to welcome him. Sure, Dad, come on. You have six kids, look, I got you. Six kids. God bless. I'm the youngest. I'm the youngest. The youngest. I said, I'm your youngest. Thank you, everyone. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you. Good job. Thank you. Thank you. We're going to be in bed by then. She's going to go to bed. Something, you gotta go to sleep. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Happy night. It really was fitting, you know, the Top 15, that was on April 28th, especially in light of teacher appreciation. It was really heartwarming. The student's success is really a testament to the incredible teachers who support them. And it was particularly meaningful when the teachers are acknowledged for their impact, even from the students' early years. So I really liked how our school district recognizes that several teachers impacted child's life. So it was really nice just to see them all. It also brings me great pleasure to recognize four exceptional students who have earned induction into our National Honor Society at the Long Island High School of the Arts. This honor bestowed upon students who demonstrate excellence, not only academics, but also in their service to others, their leadership qualities, and their strong character. So congratulations to Sophia DeKalipis, Julia Piscata, Sarah Narrenberg, and Esther Castella. Your induction is a well-deserved recognition of the well-rounded contributions to the Long Island High School Awards. Also, I just want to put a little plug in for our end-of-the-year celebration, which is going to be held on May 20, May 21st at the Crescent Club. We're going to be recognizing our white retirees on the beach, and then we're going to move indoors to further celebrate. And it's really a great pleasure to work with our Teachers Union on this. It's also a great pleasure that I now present four significant Board of Education awards as conferred by the New York State School Board Association. NISBA has recognized the following individuals. Mrs. Margaret Marshawn for Board Mastery Award. Congratulations. Unfortunately, Lauren Themis is not here, but I do want to celebrate that she got the Board Excellence Award. So we will. George Vasileu received the Board Achievement Award. And finally, Matt Barnes for the Board Achievement Award. These awards underscore the commitment of our board members achieved through their engagement in NISBA professional development opportunities and their leadership roles, including serving as president of the Board of Ed, as an advocate liaison for NISBA. I'm deeply honored to work alongside with such a dedicated board of education. I was amazed. I said four. I did tout just a little bit to the other superintendents, I just want to let you know because they need it for. Lastly, the month of May is filled with concerts, various students' performance, and sports. I hope to see you all in our auditoriums, our fields, and at least at one of our Budget Roadshows. Karen and I are hitting the pavement again tomorrow or the next day. We just keep going. Please remember to vote on May 20th. We have three election sites. If you want to visit our website, we have the locations. It's the Bayville Intermediate School, the Community Hall, of the Brookville, Brookville Reform Church, or Anne McCarthy School. Again, it's from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM to cast your vote. If you need any more additional information, please go on our website and visit the Budget Information section, and all of us there. And then lastly, please have a wonderful Mother's Day for all the mothers that are out there. And I hope you all have a wonderful end of your week. And please contact us directly, meeting like Karen or myself, if you have any questions regarding the school budget. We're here to answer them for you.
Thank you. We'll move on now to board reports. Let's start with the Audit Committee. Budget and Finance, Kristen accurately took my couple of comments. We need every single member of the community to come out to vote. You saw and you hear every month the impact of what your vote leads to every spring, that coming following year, the activities, the awards, the accomplishments, the dedication of our staff, our admin, our faculty. It's all thanks to the community members coming out on that date, May 20th, and supporting us. Please come out. Finally, capital projects, we cannot say it enough. That second proposition, the money is there. There is no impact to the taxpayers' pockets. That money has been set aside for exactly these types of incredible projects that Eric and his team are planning in collaboration with that. So please, come out, May 20th, and support the budget. Moving on, Curriculum Committee?
No reports.
Facilities Committee, no report. Policy Committee?
No report.
No report. Public Relations?
No, no report.
No report. Technology Committee?
No report.
Any other reports from the board? That's moving us on to some unfinished business. We are having a second reading and adoption of Policy Number 5710, School Safety and Educational Climate Reporting. Do I have a motion to approve that? Matt? Do I have a second? All those in favor? We're going to move on now to some new business. We have first reading of a revised policy, Policy Number 5300, Code of Conduct. As we heard this evening, we will be having the second reading and adoption at our July New York meeting. And we're also having the first reading of 5139, Concussion Management. That, too, the second reading and adoption will be at our June 11th meeting. Those policies are, of course, posted, can be reviewed. We also have an adoption and/or abolishment of some policies. We're adopting the following policies. Policy Number 0115-E, Arasman and or Bullying Complaint Form. Policy 4317, Teaching About Drugs, Alcohol, Tobacco, Vaping, and Cannabis. Policy 6675, Extra Classroom Activity Funds. And finally, 6675-R, Extra Classroom Activity Funds Regulation. We are abolishing three policies as they are being replaced or no longer needed as we've done cleanup in the policies. First one is Policy 5252, Student Activities Funds Management. 5252-R, Student Activities Funds Management Regulation. As you heard a moment ago, both again, they were placed with 6675 and 6675-R. Finally, 9221, Vacation and Holiday Pay for Non-Represented Staff. We're doing that based upon contractual cleanup that we had. Do I have a motion for the adoption and/or abolishment of those policies? Holly?
Second?
Matt? All those in favor? No. Next, we're going to move on to the Consent Agenda. Is there anything that needs discussion or would like to be pulled from the Consent Agenda? Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items? Margaret? Do I get a second? Matt? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Is there any public comment? If that, I would like a motion. If that, I would like a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting. Nick, do I have a second? Matt? All those in favor? Thank you very much, all of you again for the late start. Get home safe, everybody. Have a good week.